Boarding in progress.
Okay, and we certainly want to welcome everyone to our afternoon session of our city council meeting. And it's been a glorious, beautiful day, in and out, sunny and light sprinkles, so it doesn't get any more beautiful than that. So with that, I'm going, we only have one item on the agenda tonight, this afternoon, excuse me, and that's a closed session item. However, we will have general public comment and invite anyone who wants to speak about the closed session items to do so and give them the opportunity. So before we do that, I'll turn this over to our calm city clerk Clementine, who will share with everybody how they can participate.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For in-person attendees, I do think we have a couple. We are committed to the safe attendance of public meetings. And masks are required for all who attend in person, regardless of vaccination status, except those who are younger than two years old or have a medical condition that prevents wearing a mask. We ask attendees in the council chamber to keep their phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference. And we seek to continue to offer virtual methods for public participation in meetings. There are two ways to virtually participate. You may join the meeting directly on Zoom Gov using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device. And you can also call into the Zoom meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, use the link or phone number on the agenda at iSearchMonterey.org. Since the meeting has started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To call in by telephone, dial toll-free 833-568-8864 and enter meeting ID 1607729333 and if prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using Zoom are available at Monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you dialed in by phone, raise your hand by dialing star nine and then unmute yourself when called upon by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. I will call in each public speaker in order of their hands raised. Please stay within the time limit that will be established for today's meeting, which we will show using a countdown timer on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. Today's meeting is also streamed live on the city's YouTube account at youtube.com/cityofmonterey with approximately 10 seconds delay and on Comcast channel 25 up to 90 seconds delay. And we look forward to receiving your public comments as always. Oh, I think you're muted, Mr. Mayor.
Well, my rat terrier Gracie was repeating everything you said, so I had to mute her. She was in the background yipping her little head off. I think she stole another one of our socks. That's her favorite game these days. So if you see somebody walking around with holy socks, that's your mayor.
Or no sock at all.
Exactly. And so Clementine, while you add it, will you introduce your caring city council, please?
Yes, Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Williamson, I understand, is coming in the evening.
Okay.
I believe, and Mayor Roberson.
Yes, and I'm here as well. And so one more thing, please. Clementine, we are going to do the pledge of allegiance, so if you can display the flag for us here and.
I have it open and it's not coming up. Here we go.
There we go.
Can you see it?
Not yet. There we go. Thank you. Our wonderful Colton Hall. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation
under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Public comments. And this would allow anyone who'd like to speak for three minutes on any subjects within the jurisdiction of the Monterey City Council and not on the agenda. Also, this is your opportunity, if you wish to address anything in the closed session or one item, this is your opportunity to do that as well. Note, if you take public comments during the afternoon session, then you cannot do both. So you can do either the afternoon or the evening, according to the Brown Act. So with that, do we have anyone in the council chambers who'd like to address the council?
We do, Mr. Mayor, and Ms. Moffett will be providing public comment now.
Okay.
Evening, Mayor and city council members. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'd like to address the need of introducing wild horses and burrows into our landscape and forests such as Los Padres. In the last 40 years, the deer and other herbivore populations have plummeted from 2 million to about 350,000, according to DeerFriendly.com. That loss in ground fuel abatement, grasses and brush in and around forest amount to about 16 million pounds of fuel per day, which annualized is 2.9 million tons of grass and brush that is no longer being consumed by natural means just in California, the number one cause of these mega fires. There are 50,000 wild horses and burrows being housed by holding areas costing taxpayers $70 million a year, which could provide a much-needed natural means of eliminating fire fuel in Los Padres and surrounding areas. Horses consume about 30 pounds of brush and grass daily and due to their unique digestive systems, reseed what they eat and replenish the soils with rich humus as well. 50,000 wild horses could abate approximately 1.2 million pounds of ground fuels daily, which using mechanical means would cost tens of millions of dollars annually. And horses don't drip fuel or spark fires either. Horses are immune to the deadly prion disease that is vectored into deer and other herbivores, including sheep and cattle via grasses they eat and which spread the chronic wasting disease further into our herbivore populations. We have asked Congressman Panetta to introduce wild horses and burrows into his recent Save Our Forest Act, but he needs your support as well, as the cattle and sheep ranching communities want their livestock to fill this role, which greatly harms and has proven to harm forest floors and streams as well as spread the dreaded chronic wasting disease. Politicians need to get used to the idea that wild horses and burrows can and should be allowed to be wild just like deer and other herbivores. They can help replace the loss of herbivore populations due to fire, disease, poaching, vehicle slaughter, and improper hunting regulations that depend on the money they collect from licensing. The greatness of our nation lies not in our cities and towns, but in the scenic beauty and the wildlife populations. Please support and give him the encouragement to make such an effort. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments as always, Lorna. Anyone else in that?
We have no other public comment here in the council chambers, Mayor Roberson.
And Mayor Roberson, I do not see any hands raised on the Zoom either.
All right then, and we don't have any, okay, sorry. Having computer glitches today. There's a spoonerism for you there. All right, I'm back. All right, well, since we always appreciate Ms. Moffett sharing her thoughts with us and we'll close public comments and ensure to close session. Thank you, everyone. See you shortly.
Recording in progress.
Welcome back to our council meeting. We're very pleased to have everyone join us for a topic that all of us have a great interest in and had been following. So meanwhile, let's see, we're going to, hang on, we'll find you somewhere in here. Aha, there you are. Just having to find the right, the right window so I can open the meeting. So welcome back and we're going to go right ahead to our first public hearing. And this is a continuation of receiving public input with regards to city council member districts. We have some draft maps that the public has taken some time to respond to. We've also had some draft potential council districts of people's own maps. And we, I've enjoyed those very much. I appreciate people's analysis. It's, it's, it's an interesting process with a complex city with spread out, some neighborhoods just connected to the rest of the city through corridors, a major military installations with populations and commercial mixed use, educational, military installation, schools. And so it's, it's quite an art form to put all of this together. And so without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to our capable city manager, Hans Uslar. When I'm sure we're going to be hearing from our celebrated assistant city manager on some background. And what we expect tonight is more public input, your thoughts on the four drafts or other maps. And also a very interesting decision that ultimately the council will need to make. And that is with respect to sequencing, which districts will appear on the 2022 election? Because we know how, we have two members who will continue to serve at large. And then we will have potentially three districts which would qualify. However, we can only do two by charter, so we'll have that discussion. That requires a deeper conversation, I think. And so with that, to our city manager, Hans.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think you may, we are missing still council member Williamson. I hope he will be able joining us later. Thank you for, 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 for the introduction. I think it was about nine or 10 o'clock this morning. We, we learned that we had a clerical error in the posting in the morning, the notice to post this meeting in the Monterey Herald. It was in the Spanish version of the no public notice. We had the wrong date in, in that Spanish version of the posting. So nevertheless, we, we are, we decided that we will go forward with that meeting tonight to allow an introduction to the maps, to the draft maps, to all to allow an introduction to the maps, to the draft maps, to also have an opportunity, provide an opportunity for the public and the council to weigh in and, and ask questions and, and hopefully get good answers back. But tonight, I want to just let, let you know, tonight you will be just receiving input. You will be having an opportunity to ask questions. You will hear from, from the public as well, and then you will hear from Nat and, and our consultants as well about the, the different maps. So it isn't, in, in, in other words, the good news in all of that is that the clerical error allows you to have another opportunity in, in two weeks to actually then provide directions, which one of the draft maps you like to work on and also then to provide us guidance with respect to the sequencing. This, this, I apologize for that, that clerical error in the, in the Spanish posting of the public notice. Nevertheless, we, we, we feel we, we need to go forward. The public is, is lined up probably to, to, to listen and to learn and also to speak about that topic. We've come, we're in connect, we are in contact also with the LULAC because the, the tight timeline that, that we anticipating may lead to a delay of one day based on, on the new circumstances. So we are talking to them and have a preliminary understanding that they are fine with the additional day extension. We're working on those details as well. So that's not a great start to 2022. However, things like that happen and I'm glad that we got our one off, out of the way very early on. And the rest of 2022 will be just glorious. So without further ado, I, I hand it over to, to our assistant city manager, Nat Rosha Nasatira.
And thank you, Hans, for that introduction and the information about, about our, what we're now calling is just a public meeting and not the third public hearing. First off, I wanted to introduce all of you to Paul Mitchell. Paul is the president of Redistricting Partners. They're the firm that has been going through the entire redistricting process for us, serving as our lead demographer. Many of you are familiar with Liz and she may be joining us later today, Liz Stitt. But Paul is the principal of the firm and has experience working for a variety of counties throughout the state of California and going through districting efforts in cities as large as Los Angeles and Long Beach and as small as Martinez and other cities in the Bay Area. Currently, Paul is going through an effort, they're, one of their clients is the New York Independent Redistricting Commission. So they're drawing out some of these draft maps for the state of New York's state legislature legislative districts as well as their congressional districts. So the maps that you see are very similar in terms of the layout and look and feel and how they're presented as what the citizens of New York are going through now for their congressional map. So welcome, Paul. I'm glad you're here tonight and, and he'll be providing you with the information on what the new maps look like. He will be also able to answer questions regarding the demographic analysis and talk a little bit more about the sequencing of elections, which is another topic for this evening. So we'll start by letting you know that due to the error, clerical error that we discovered, that the goal for today is for all of you to ask questions about the proposed maps. We'd like you as council to gather feedback. And then what we would ask is that council tonight, since this is not the third public hearing officially, we're not asking you to select the specific map to move forward. We will be asking you to, to do that in two weeks when we actually have the third public hearing on January 18. We'll also encourage you to ask questions about the process for sequencing elections, which Paul and I will describe to you. And then also gather general feedback from the public and city council. So let's do a quick recap on the timeline and where we are so far. December 7th was when we held the first public hearing that was mainly informational. We talked about their criteria for creating districts, went into detail there determining the number of districts. So council selected that, that we would have four council member districts with an at-large mayor. We also discussed the, and introduced the public input process, which we'll also recap today. On December 9th, we had a community meeting on how to get feedback. That's also when the community of interest forum was released as well as a mapping toolkit. And then on December 21st, there was the second public hearing. And this was called the pre-map hearing. We gathered feedback from the public, gathered general input on boundaries and communities of interest. And as Mayor Robertson said, exact examples of some of the maps that were, have been submitted by the public were also shown at this time. And then last week on December 28th, the draft maps were released. There are four draft maps we'll be going over with all of you in detail today. And then today we had hoped to have a third public hearing, but it'll just be a regular public meeting to review those draft maps and discuss sequencing. And then we'll hold the third public hearing on January 18th. As Hans mentioned, we have made a request for a one-day extension from LULAC. And verbally Andrew Sandoval from the organization has agreed for the extension. We are just working on getting the details out in writing for that extension. So we'll be back here again in two weeks to go over those maps and then ask council, all of you to focus on one map. And then also to give us initial feedback on the sequencing of elections. And then our fourth public hearing will be on February 1st, where the, the final map will be shared with all of you. We'll talk about the election sequence, the ordinance will actually be introduced. And then any final, final changes to the map or election sequencing can be made at that time. And the ordinance can be modified and then final adoption with no changes is scheduled for February 15th, where the fifth public hearing will be held. Another, and all of you have seen this before, if you've watched our council meetings, the traditional districting principles. And these are the criteria that have been used nationally and are upheld by courts. Districts must be relatively equal in size. That's based on people, not citizens. They should be contiguous. They should be fairly compact, both in appearance and function, maintain communities of interest. And then also follow the city county or government lines, in our case, the city boundaries of the city. So the goals for today and this evening, first is we've talked about the recap on how districts are created. We've talked about the timeline. We're going to transition here into reviewing the draft maps, discuss the sequencing of elections, have a Q and A session from council regarding the maps as well as sequencing, and then also receive public comments. And before we begin, we wanted to also clarify and, and reiterate that the California Fair Maps Act has a few rules and criteria that also state that there is a transparent process when districting is being conducted. There is no incumbent or candidate residency as a community of interest. In fact, our demographers, redistricting partners, they have no idea where the council members, the incumbents currently live. And they don't draw districts to advantage of political party either. So how are we engaging the public or how have we been engaging the public? We launched the Have Your Say Monterey Portal website information a few months ago, back in, in November, actually. And that's when residents can submit maps using a mapping toolkit, which we released. There's also a public hearing and public participation information available in Spanish. And in addition to that, quite a bit of social media, email blasts, Hans's mornings with the manager that's held every three weeks on YouTube Live. Also media outreach, press releases, postcard mailer to all households. We've launched a map making station at the Monterey Public Library where we've received quite a few maps and posted those online as well. And then neighborhood engagement community meeting and print advertisements, both in Monterey Herald as well as the Monterey County Weekly and also the Spanish language newspaper in our region. So far, as of this afternoon, we received 26 maps submitted by the public, 12 communities of interest forums and over 50 emails and letters, all of which is posted at haveryousaymonterey.org/districting. So these are the development of the draft maps. Again, reiterating that these are created by the city's demographer, Redistricting Partners. And I'll ask Paul to just go over this slide briefly if he can. Welcome again, Paul.
Thank you very much. So when we, when we develop draft maps, we have to follow what are some of the criteria in the Fair Maps Act? And also follow what are state and national rules based on basic, you know, previous court precedents and so on. And so that gives us a set of best practices to use in our redistricting. The number one criteria in redistricting, the number one reason why we do it every 10 years is to balance population. So when we're drawing districts for the first time, that same principle holds that we need to make sure that districts are equally balanced in total population. This is the fundamental aspect of the districting process is that everybody should have equal, an equal share of voting rights and representative rights. So if, if Hans and I live on different sides of a city or different sides of a state and we need to seek help from our, our state legislators, it wouldn't be fair if his district had 50,000 people and my district had 500,000 people. Effectively, my voting power would be one tenth of his if that was the case. My representative power to get the government to respond to my issues would be one tenth of what that is. So the idea of keeping districts equal size is about both for voting and for representation purposes, that they need to be equal. In the districting process, we have to follow the data that comes from the decennial census after it's adjusted for the prison population adjustment by the state of California. So we use a census data set that is both population counts and the census geography. Think of, think of the census geography as like a honeycomb. And each little cell has a certain number of population in it. We have to use each of those little honeycomb shapes when we're drawing districts to be sure that when we tell you that there's 1,300 people in this area, that there is in fact 1,300 people in that area. So we're, we're bound to using that census data. And that means that for clarity, we use that, that census geography as well. We seek, in addition to keep creating population equality, to try to keep communities together. Sometimes you'll hear about Voting Rights Act concerns and the needs to keep communities together that are racial, ethnic, language minority groups. That's especially important when you get to areas where you can get a district that's 50% of one ethnic population. That isn't the case in Monterey. So we can, we'll use the data to analyze how the lines affect those minority populations. But we won't use that as a predominant factor in the line drawing process. The preserving of communities of interest and of neighborhoods are a priority in the state law. And the idea with that is that people who have shared interests should be able to have the ability to elect candidates that will fight for those issues. Maybe it's a, a community of interest of people along the coast side. Maybe it's the community of interest of people who live near downtown area. Maybe it's a community of renters or homeowners. Keeping those together is a priority and also keeping neighborhoods together is a priority. I know just in my life that when I've lived in a downtown area, people say, where do you live? I'm downtown. That was like an identity thing. And the issues in the downtown area were different than when I lived in the suburbs where, you know, we had different concerns. So keeping those communities together is really important. When we actually go and do the line drawing process, we have to balance those criteria. And it might be like in an ideal world, we could keep every neighborhood whole and, you know, manage a process to create districts that all have really great shapes visually. But since we also have to make them equal size, that starts to create a complication. So we end up having to do a thing where we're balancing then the desire to keep all these, these communities whole and also the need to make sure that they're all equally sized. And sometimes that means that you get district lines that aren't exactly following a neighborhood boundary. In addition, the census, those cells, those honeycomb cells, aren't all shaped like little squares or circles. Some of them have long weird arms and weird shapes to them. And so when we go in and we select a census block, you might end up capturing a bunch of area that you weren't really intending. But that's one of the trade-offs when you're doing this work. You have to follow that census geography and it's not always going to follow, you know, right down the middle of the street where you're intending to draw a line. The idea and what we'll try to do in the work is to minimize the negative impacts of the redistrict, of the districting process and ensure that as few neighborhoods as possible are divided and as few communities of interest are divided in the districting process.
Great, thank you, Paul. And the team from Redistricting Partners put together a, this map. And if you could describe this a little bit more and how.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
I was just trying to email Liz to find out if you'd gotten that. But yes, so the, one of the community of interest is the renter population. And this map takes, based on the census block group level, a census block group is a collection of, you know, it could be five or 10 or 20 census blocks, but a census block group gives us data from the American Community Survey on what percentage of people say that they're renters. And so when we look here, you can see that in the new Monterey neighborhood area, you have a mix of one census block group with 97% renters, two others in the 80% range. Then when you look at the student population area, you see a large 90% of renters. When you get down into the Monterey Vista kind of skyline neighborhoods, you see really low rates of renter. So, you know, as little as 2% renter in that area. And as you go around to the downtown, old town, again, high renter population. And so if you were to say, well, when we draw districts, we want to make sure that the, that those residential homeowners have an ability to elect a candidate that will really be a champion for them. And that renters have an opportunity to elect a candidate that isn't, isn't going to kind of dismiss their concerns about, you know, whatever the issue is. Whether it's a rent control issue or a transportation issue or tenants' rights issue. Then what we would want to do is make sure we're drawing districts that capture those groups. We wouldn't, as an example, want to draw districts where you had multiple districts going from skyline to the shore, skyline to the shore, skyline to the shore. That would mean that you're taking a lot of those heavy renter populations and kind of pushing them into districts that also have heavy homeowner populations. So using this type of community of interest, we could see how that would affect potential lines that you want to draw.
Thank you, Paul. So these are the four maps that our consultants, Paul and his team, put together. And they're aptly named after marine sea animals, sea creatures here in the Monterey Bay, abalone, bat ray, turtlefish and dolphin. And what you can see here is that each plan, and we're going to go into detail and share information because some of these lines are hard to see on the screen. So we'll be able to zoom in a little bit more and see where some of these distinctions are within each, each plan. But generally speaking, the abalone plan includes New Monterey and Old Town together along. And then this district B within the abalone plan has the Upper Presidio tied with Skyline Forest and most of Monterey Vista with district C, including downtown, Oak Road, Naval Coast Graduate School, Del Monte Beach and via Del Monte and we're going to grind a neighborhood on the side. And then section D or district D within the abalone plan has the rest of the city. So Ryan Ranch all the way out, Fish Flats, Deer Flats and Kona, Altamasa, Glenwood and, and the lower part of, of Monterey, this stuff. And what's, what's notable with these maps and one of the reasons why you don't see too many variations between A and B here is we've talked quite a bit about the military population. And as many of you know, over 3,000 dormitories are located in the upper Presidio. So the only two options is to either put 3,000 military students in either the new Monterey district or, or tie it with the majority of Monterey Vista and, and Skyline. That takes us to the Bat Ray Plan, which in this proposal has Upper Presidio with the 3,000 students tied to New Monterey. And, and unfortunately, in this situation, because of population, New Monterey has to be split. And, and so there's a dividing line here. And so there's a dividing line here. And you can see, and we'll go through through this, but the this is more of a the B district is the center of Monterey that includes Old Town, lower portions of New Monterey as well as the majority of Monterey Vista. And then the Section D here combines Oak Grove with Via Del Monte, Casanova Oak Knoll and Laguna Grande as well. So and then C being more of outer, outer region. In the Cuttlefish Plan over here, you've got very similar to the abalone plan, New Monterey and Old Town together with Upper Presidio, most of Monterey Vista and Skyline in one. And then what's a little bit different is that you've got in this Cuttlefish Plan more of a north-south for the C District and then the D District. And then the Dolphin Plan is almost identical to the abalone plan except rather than having a district that has Downtown with Oak Grove and the dividing line essentially being Fremont Street. The dividing line here puts the the Downtown with with Alta Mesa and Glenwood with La Mesa Village over here and and the area here at Ryan Ranch as well as Fish Flats and Deer Flats. So we're going to go into a little bit more more detail so you can see each map. And I know Paul was impressively named a number of neighborhoods. The reason why us as staff were going to go through the overview is because our our familiarization with the neighborhoods. And and then Paul will go into the details with the with the demographics. So we're going to start with the abalone plan. And again, without going into a lot of detail, I'm going to switch over quickly to the interactive map. And the link to this interactive map is available in the atlas, which we published on December 28. So if you go to the table of contents, you can actually go into these maps and members of the public can actually zoom in to see where the dividing lines are within each district. So this is the abalone plan. And as we shared with you, New Monterey and Old Town are together. And the dividing line is roughly Madison Street and and Larkin Street. And Scott Street is where where the the lines start and and end. You know, obviously, it would have been ideal to include all of Old Town, but the population of New Monterey and all of Old Town is too great to create one district. So the lower part of Old Town is tied in this case with with the red district here, which includes Downtown, Oak Grove and and Naval Coast Graduate School, the Del Monte Beach Neighborhood and Via Del Monte and Laguna Grande. So you can see here the dividing line between this district and this district here is for Fremont Street and Fremont Street. Actually runs all the way from our border at the easternmost part of the city and seaside and Del Rio, all the way down to to Abrego Street and Munro's Avenue. So that's that's the difference here. You'll see here, Section B, again, the reason why the Monterey Vista neighborhood is split slightly. All of Skyline is intact. Upper Presidio is because of that Upper Presidio population. So what was attempted here is that we've got Martin Street, San Bernabe Drive and then Soladad Drive as the dividing line. So the streets south of Martin Street and that are close to Pacific Street, in this case, is is proposed in this abalone plan to be part of a district that also includes Alta Mesa as well as as La Mesa Village, Glenwood and Deer Flats and Fish Flats and Casanova Oak Knoll. So this is the abalone plan and we're going to let Paul go into detail more about. And here's the neighborhood identification and how how that split. And Paul will describe a little bit more about the census and the citizen voting age population and how this breaks down for us.
Great. So when you get one of our maps, our maps aren't just like the outline of the maps within the city and each of the individual districts. We actually go in, have a data page that's associated, kind of a summary page of all the data within each of the districts. Now, I apologize that for people who are watching online, these numbers might be kind of small, but the packets that you can download from the website are high quality. You can see them really well and they're easy to read. When we look at the data, the first three rows on that from the 2020 census give you the sense of that that question I asked about, can we create districts that are equal population? And when we say equal population, we're not meaning like in a congressional district that they're equal, perfectly equal to a one person total deviation. But in local government and in the state level, you're able to have a maximum of 10% total plan deviation for them to still be considered equal. And so when we look at each of the populations of these districts, you can see they're right all about the 7,500 level, give or take something. And that give or take is called a deviation. So the first district is at 7750. That is 178 overpopulated. And so the deviation there is 2.4%. That's 2.4, 178 is 2.4% of of the total of the perfectly equal size. So when we look at each of these districts, you'll see that the first district is at 2.4, the next one is at 3.7 over. Then the next one is at negative 3.8 and the next one is at negative 2.2. When we say an actual deviation is per district, then there's also the idea of the plan deviation. So the total plan deviation is the difference between the highest and the lowest or the sum of the absolute values of the highest and the lowest. So the sum of 3.7 plus 3.8. So that's a total plan deviation of 7.5. Now, we also have the Asian, Latino, African-American numbers in that data table. And that's from the decennial census. So based on surveys, door knocking, online surveys, everything that was done in 2020 to try to capture the total population on April 1st, 2020. But the second table is actually another very important data set, also from the census that also helps characterize the the composition of the population. If you remember when I talked about the renter population, I said that that data came from the American Community Survey and it came at the census block group level. This data also is is from that same data set. And it also is at that census block group level. It's called Citizen Voting Age Population. Now, we know that they did not ask citizenship on the decennial census. So the April 1st, 2020 didn't have that question. But the Citizen Voting Age Population utilizes a much longer American Community Survey that asks people everything from how many bedrooms are in their house to how far do they travel to work? Questions about nationality, race, language, kids and all that other information that is more. It gives a better characterization of the community. And it's the kind of data that's used from the census for everything from business decisions to government funding and everything else. For the purposes of redistricting, the Department of Justice requires that the census put out every year updated data on the Citizen Voting Age Population. And this is what would be utilized in any kind of Voting Rights Act concerns. And so we include this in all the data tables to give that idea of what is the share of the population that from a voting perspective is of each race or nationality? So when we look at this, we can see in that District A, the Latino CVAP, Latino Citizen Voting Age Population at 12.6%. The Asian Citizen Voting Age Percent at 4.0 and the African American at 5.7. And if we look across the horizontally across all the Latino CVAPS, you can see the highest is 15.9 and the lowest is 9.8. That means that as we look at the plan here that are in this Plan Abalone, the there is not a real kind of one side of town has 60% Latino. The other side of town is 6% Latino kind of kind of a population that you have in the city. It's much more evenly spread out. We're only 16% in one, as low as just under 10% in another. The Asian population similarly goes from 4% to 10%. And the African American population goes from 5.7 to 2. Now, I want to stress finally that this data is from, like I said, a different data set. It is also averaged data. It's actually averaged over a five-year basis. So this is data that's collected and reported out from 2015 to 2019. And it was released in February 2020. The census isn't going to reproduce this data until March of 2021, maybe April. So this is the data that we'll be using for redistricting until or if that new data becomes available. But it is always estimated data and it needs to be kind of taken with a little grain of salt when we're thinking about it that way.
Great. Thanks, Paul. Ready to move on to the Bat Ray Plan? And let's go to the interactive, interactive map so that we can see it a little bit more more closely here. And this is the plan that has, as we mentioned earlier, the Upper Presidio tied with New Monterey. And as you zoom in, you can see the dividing line is Hawthorne Street. So everything to the to the east, I'm sorry, to the west of Hawthorne Street is part of this proposed District A and the Bat Ray Plan and everything east, lower of New Monterey, if you will, based on elevation, closer to the water is part of this B District. And I know we've got some questions about why, why, for example, this funky line that's here. There's a census block, I believe, that that actually runs from Harrison Street and Skyline Drive and goes all the way over to this part of Skyline. So you either, you know, this district needs to be part of part of what you see here, the C District or it needs to be part of the B District or or the A District. And it just made more sense to maybe be part of this this red district here. You can see the rest of the line tries to follow as closely as possible to the boundaries of Skyline Forest, the Skyline Neighborhood and where that divides between Skyline and Monterey Vista, even though there's there's some overlap there. The other key distinction between different districts is Munro's Avenue and Fremont Street is a dividing line here. So you've got all of Alta Mesa in in this C District along with Glenwood and La Mesa Village, this is Navy Housing and Montsalis, Deer Flats, Fish Flats and then and then Ryan Ranch, which has no residents. And then District D, as as we described earlier, includes all of Casanova Oak Knoll and both sides of Fremont Street in this case, along with Via Del Monte and Laguna Grande, Del Monte Grove Neighborhood and Oak Grove and Del Monte Beach. I know one of the questions that folks have asked is, well, why is this this part here, we know on the bay, why isn't it part of Downtown? Well, this is actually one census block as one example. So if it made more sense for an area that had no residents to be tied to D than to try to have part of Oak Grove be part of be part of this B District. So that's an overview of of this plan, the Bat Ray Plan. And we'll ask Paul to go into a little bit more detail with the census data in this plan.
Yeah, so on this plan, I think we'll just, I don't have to go through the description each time. But there is the overall plan deviation, which is approximately the same size. Do you still have that other slider? Does it go like that? There we go, 7.2%. And when we look at the ethnic population of these districts, you can see that District D is at 17% or 16.9% Latino CVAP. The highest Asian CVAP is right under that 10% mark at 9.2 in that same district. And the black CVAP is as high as just under 5% in District A. So that's the kind of highlights of that plan from the data perspective.
Thanks, Paul. And then we'll go over to the Cuttlefish Plan. This is the third plan that's being presented to you. And again, this one, this District A within the Cuttlefish Plan has all of New Monterey together and most of Old Town. The dividing line in this case is most of Harrison Street over here in the upper Harrison Street, Madison Street and then Larkin Street and Encina. What you have as part of District B, the Cuttlefish Plan, is all of the 3,000 plus residents, again, of of the dormitories here at the Presidio of Monterey, all of Skyline, the majority of Monterey Vista. And again, we can include all of Monterey Vista because that would be too large of a district. So what Redistricting Partners did was tried to put the the lower parts of of Monterey Vista from Via Corizo down to Pacific Street as part of this District C, which includes all of Downtown, Oak Grove, Alta Mesa, Glenwood and La Mesa Village. And then what you have here in the D, proposed D District in this Cuttlefish Plan is essentially Casanova Oak Knoll along with Laguna Grande, Del Monte Grove, Via Del Monte and Del Monte Beach, Naval Coast Graduate School and Montsalis here, Deer Flats, Fish Flats and and Ryan Ranch. So that's your Cuttlefish Plan. Okay? All right, let's, and then here's the, again, this is all in Atlas single combined PDF document that folks can download. But thanks to the Redistricting Partners team, they put together maps that show that line of the districts and then where the neighborhood boundaries are. So as you can see, they've tried to keep as many neighborhoods intact as possible. All right, let's go to, and then this is the Cuttlefish. Go ahead, Paul.
Alrighty, again, we're looking at the same kind of total population deviation of it looks like just under 7%. I think you have this slide. There we go, 6.5% total plan deviation. And then very similar kind of Latino, Asian and black CVAP numbers, 16.2 being the highest Latino population district number, 9.0, so just under that 10% mark for Asian population in District C. And then the black population highest number, right, that 5.8 in District A.
And then the last plan, Plan Dolphin. And again, we'll go over to the Dolphin Plan and the dividing line here for the District A, again, combines New Monterey, all of it, with Lower Presidio and Old Town with the dividing line being Harrison's, upper part Harrison Street, Madison Street and then Larkin and Scott. The green district here, District B within Plan Dolphin has Upper Presidio along with all of Skyline and most of Monterey Vista. The dividing line here being Herman Drive via Corizo, zooming in, San Bernabe Drive via Encina and then down to Soladad Drive. And then what you have here with the the D District within the Dolphin Plan is all of Downtown, the lower part of Old Town, the lower part of Monterey Vista. We've got Alta Mesa, Glenwood, all of La Mesa Village and Aguacito Oaks as well. And then you've also got Deer Flats and Fish Flats and then and then Ryan Ranch. And in this case, the C District has Oak Grove along with Del Monte Beach and Laguna Grande and Via Del Monte along with Casanova Oak Knoll. So if those try to, like with all the maps, they have different pros and cons and tries to represent various communities of interest and group them together. So we're going to go ahead and go to the demographic information now. And go ahead, Paul.
Alrighty. So on this one, we see one district that has a much higher deviation of a negative 5.6. And then the most overpopulated is only 2.4. So that total plan deviation is is 8%. Still, I want to emphasize on this. Some people get captured by the idea that a total 10% plan deviation should be 5% over, 5% under. But this shows that you can have it where one district is more than 5% under. And then all the other three districts, as you notice, are overpopulated. But the total variance between the largest and smallest is that 8%, which is within the 10% total deviation range. So that's important. When we look at the Latino CVAP, the highest number is 16.9 and the Asian CVAP 9.2 and the black CVAP 5.7. So very similar across all the plans that we've looked at.
Okay, and then we're almost, so those are the maps. We'll talk briefly about the potential sequence of elections. Okay, and then we're almost, so those are the maps. We'll talk briefly about the potential sequence of elections. So since part of the way that implementation of district-based elections works is that those council members whose terms aren't up until 2024 get to keep their seats. There are two districts that, this is a phased-in approach, so two districts have to be identified to go for elections in November of 2022 with the two other districts in November of 2024. So that allows that staggered approach with, consistent with our city charter, with four-year terms for each council member. So this is determined by by the City Council. And one of the legal requirements is that the City Council shall give special consideration to the purposes of the California Voting Rights Act. And that means protecting the ability of a protected class to elect their candidate of its choice. Could you explain this a little bit more, Paul, for us?
Yeah, so what's happening is that we are conducting this work under the California Voting Rights Act because there's been a claim that the minority populations are not able to elect candidates of choice or have influence in the outcome of elections effectively in the at-large election system. This has been happening all over the state and so it's been fairly common in a lot of cities, even cities approximately your size with the same kind of demographics. So one of the issues that comes up is when we look at populations of residents and the creation of districts, let's say we create a district that is that 17% Latino. If we create that district 17% Latino, does it matter what election cycle we put them in? Oddly, it actually could matter to the effectiveness of that community and being able to have an impact in the election. So based on the principle of the California Voting Rights Act and now in this code section, it suggests that especially if you have evidence that there are different voting patterns for minority populations and that those minority populations would be better served by having a district that is in a presidential or gubernatorial election cycle, that you should try and do that. So the the thing to really ask yourself is understanding the city of Monterey. Would a presidential election cycle or gubernatorial election cycle better allow that population to have a voice in the elections? Now, we have done some work and we can send you some data on the voting patterns for Latinos and non-Latinos in the city and also for homeowners and renters in the city to show that, in fact, Latinos are lower turnout on average in elections, but that gap narrows in higher turnout elections like presidentials. And the same is true for renters. Renters are lower turnout in the city than homeowners and that gap narrows in presidential elections, widens in like special elections or in gubernatorial election cycles. So there will be a number of factors that you want to consider when you're determining which districts are going to come up in which election cycle. Based on this requirement, you should give special consideration, not the only consideration, but some special consideration to the question of, well, if we have a 17 or 18% Latino district, should we put that district in an election where they're going to be coming up in a presidential presidential election cycle, which would mean having that district come up in 2024 instead of having that district come up in 2022? Outside of that specific kind of concern, there is a lot of latitude for you to identify the appropriate numbering system for each of the districts and election cycle for each of the districts, however you want to. This is just the one thing that kind of gets set aside as a special consideration.
Thanks, Paul. And and how new district areas are phased in, so just as an overview here, council members whose terms expire in 2022 will continue to serve the city through November 2022. And they can run for district-based seats in November 22, provided that they reside in the district that's scheduled for November 2022, obviously. And council members whose terms expire in November 2024, they'll continue to serve the city at large for the remainder of their term. So a year from now, we'll actually have two council members who are at large and then two council members who are by district with the two districts that councils decided to have go to elections in 2022. The council members whose whose terms expire in 2024 will have an opportunity to run for district-based seats in November 2024, provided that they actually reside in a district that's scheduled for 2024. Now, if multiple current council members live in the same district, so if the election is held in 2022, the incumbents can run for election in that district along with any other candidate. The person who receives the most votes will win the seat in that district, whether they're an incumbent or or not. If a council member's whose term is up in 2024, if they win a district-based seat in 2022, he would resign his at-large seat and then that at-large vacancy would be appointed by the council. So adds a little bit, little bit to the complexity of it, but essentially if a council member's term is up in 2024 and they their district or the where they reside is in a district that's actually up in 2024, they could actually still run for office in 2022 and so that they have the opportunity to be in that seat from 2022 through 2026 and they would essentially leave their at-large seat and go into the the district-based seat, if that makes sense. And then what if no current council members resides in a district? So if there is a council member who resides in a district that's if no council member resides in a district scheduled for the November 2022 election, only non-incumbents will be qualified to run for election in that district, obviously, and if no council member resides in a district that's scheduled for the November 2024 election, that district would be represented by the remaining at-large council members until 2024, when its first district-based election will be up. Anything else you want to add, Paul, about sequencing?
No, I think one real easy way to think about the the transition from at-large to election to district elections is that the 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 district elections don't take effect immediately. The 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 ordinance you pass does take effect immediately, but the first set of council districts comes up in '22 and then the second set of council districts come up in '24. Between '22 and '24, you're actually going to be governing as a hybrid structure where you're going to have council members that were elected in districts and other council members that were elected in that older at-large system. And that will continue until you fully transition after 2024.
Thank you, Paul. So providing this a little bit of a roadmap for for you all, so not tonight, but at our next public hearings, so in two weeks from today, we'll ask you to go through a two-step process. And the first is to choose one map to move forward in the process. So we'll re-present to you and and share with you the four maps, the Abalone, Batray, Cuttlefish and Dolphin plans and and ask you to choose one of them and then you can make some modifications to that map or requests for modifications. And then after that first step, we'll then ask you to provide initial feedback on the sequence of elections based on the map that's chosen and which districts could potentially be sequenced for November of 2022 and which two districts for November of 2024. And and that will then be considered for at the introduction of the ordinance on February 1st. But for tonight, as a reminder, we do encourage you to ask questions about the proposed maps, gather feedback. As Redistricting Partners and staff will gather feedback from the public as well as from you, the council. And and again, council does not select a specific map to move forward, but you're you're welcome to share your overall feedback. Right now, it's not officially a public hearing, but it's still a not a public hearing, but it is still a public meeting. And we will ask, you're welcome to ask questions for Paul about the sequence of elections and also gather feedback from the public about sequencing of elections. So that's that's our ask from staff to you tonight. And back to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, well, thank you so much for your very cogent presentation. A lot to digest, but obviously, thanks to Paul and his firm and our staff. This has been on our website, lots of great outreach. And so we continue to encourage public participation. So if it seemed a little overwhelming, if you saw this for the first time, please go to our website, City of Monterey, and go for Have Your Say and you can see all of these, like, and the maps are good, you can click on Detailed Map and see city streets. So I appreciate that, encourage the public to to do that. All right, before we go out for public comment, we'll do our our usual process and go with council questions. And so I see Council Member Ed's hand raised. Ed, would you start us off with questions, please?
Yeah, great. Thank you very much to staff and Paul. A question that I've had a couple of times from members of the public, I think I know the answer to this, but I think it would help if we could illuminate that. Question has to do with the boundaries. And as we look at the map, the lines are obvious on the map, but the question is, do you follow the center line of a street? Or what makes the decision about which side, if it's on the east side or the west side or the north or the south? So if you could explain explain that. And the other question at the same time would be, are there any guidelines that is offered to us through the legislation that explain a little more about what a community of interest is? And I think you explained the the racial factor, aside from the the minority factor, but a little more on what a community of interest would be in this process.
Okay, great questions.
Paul. Sure, I'll take a stab at it first. So first off, the the census geography is what we have to follow when we're drawing these lines. And a lot of times the census geography does go right down the middle of streets. They, it will also take weird shapes, especially where there's like a little bit of a river or a little bit of a you know, a empty lot or something like that, or you know, someplace that's undeveloped, it might just take a little weird snaking shape and there is a way every 10 years to petition the census to have them kind of make different lines in the census blocks. And oftentimes, cities will do that because they want to maintain the districts that they have without having to have weird shapes get introduced the next time they update the census. The census actually went from California having 710,000 census blocks to now just having about 500,000 census blocks. So there are a bunch of cities around the state where they used to have a line that was like a straight line and now it comes down and has to jog out and follow some weird census boundary change. So that's what we're using and you know, you can zoom in using that web map all the way down to the street level to look at that. When we actually go from the part of drawing these plans and getting them adopted, we will will work with the county on converting all of these to actual precinct boundaries. So you'll see in years to come that the precincts will follow the lines that are drawn as a function of this redistricting process. And so we'll sometimes in some counties, they use parcel layers for the actual administration of elections. And so we'll go in and work with the county to, you look at a census line and say, okay, well, it's cutting this person's front lawn, but we have to make sure that this house is in the right district and we do all that work with the county afterwards. On the communities of interest, the Fair Maps Act has a definition that speaks to communities of interest as being similarly minded people who share a similar geographic or socioeconomic kind of relationship. And it also kind of ties the idea of communities of interest in neighborhoods as kind of either maybe you could think of as an example of a community of interest is people who identify based on where they live, what neighborhood they're in. Now, when we're as redistricting partners and working with clients out, you know, interacting through meetings or outreach hearings or whatever, to try to learn about people's communities of interest, we really want to hear three things about what a community of interest is. The first is that it has a name. My community of interest is cyclists or my community of interest is, you know, I'll just stick with cyclists, my community of interest is cyclists. And so what is the geographic nature of that? That's the second question. And so maybe the cyclists live in a part of town or maybe we always have to ride down that bike path that goes by the aquarium. And you know, there's walkers and cyclists and that's kind of the area that's the physical area of interest. And then what is the connection of my community of interest to the governing body that's being redistricted? So maybe the city does maintain that little bike path. And so that's one connection between we as cyclists and you as the council and why we want to make sure that our community of interest is drawn into a certain district in the redistricting process. Now, if this was a water board, there might not be a connection between cyclists and the water board redistricting or the school board redistricting. And the same thing's true going the other way. In a school board redistricting, it might be really, really, really important where the local elementary school is. But in a city council redistricting or a water redistricting, it's not as important. So three things of making up a community of interest for the purposes of helping draw lines, something that's identifiable, something that has a geographic nature and something that has a tie to the agency being redistricted.
Hey, Paul, if I could just follow up on what Council Member Ed said. I'm not sure I still understand if there's a street, let's say Franklin Street or or, yeah, that's good. And the line, the map shows Franklin Street in New Monterey or Old Town. And is it, where do you divide? Does that, I think Ed's question was, are both sides of the street considered? Do you go down the middle, as you were saying, or it's up to us when we adopt the map to make that distinction?
Yeah, it's definitely up to the census when they draw that line and almost everywhere I've looked is that it's going right down the middle of the street. Okay. So that's sometimes, if there's a question about that, like, let's say, I'm trying to think of in Monterey, I think there are some areas where you have a street with a median that'll be kind of a big, healthy median, like with grass on it and trees. Sometimes they'll actually make a separate census block just for that area that's the median to kind of separate it from the others. So there will be some places where you see little zero people, you know, no population census blocks, it's just a median. But you won't have a situation generally where you have a census block that is capturing both sides of the street. And if that were the case, it would draw the line at the next street down.
Got it. Okay, thanks. That clarifies it. Council Member Tyler, welcome to our meeting. We missed you and you have your hand up.
Thank you very, yes. I have two questions. Paul, the first is you were talking about this data and looking at say, the Latino population and and how they vote in different elections. Is that information or data that you can make available to us?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll send that in to you. This is from Political Data. It's a company that I work with when I'm not doing redistricting. And just to give a flavor of this, in the city of Monterey, it looks as though actually, this would be, I think this might be Monterey County, so I'll I'll get you for exactly Monterey City. But in in the county of Monterey, Latinos in the most recent gubernatorial recall were roughly around 40% turnout. In the 20 general election, they were 66% turnout. And in the 2020 primary election, they were only 28% turnout. So you can see that difference in their turnout rate based on the election cycle. If we were just to look at the difference between, say, a presidential and a gubernatorial election cycle, generally with Latinos, you see a significant drop-off. And that would point to the idea that in order to make them more effective in a district at being able to influence the outcome, you might want to ensure that that district is on the cycle of being with the presidential election cycle.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. And then my last question is, I'm just wondering, there was that map that showed the hot areas of where renters live and I'm wondering if the different maps can be superimposed on that to kind of see, or or if there was a way for us to see which districts had greater renter populations?
Both. We can give you these four maps or if you in the future call it down to one or two maps, we can do that, but we can do a superimposed map that shows each of the districts and that data. And then we can also give you a a report that shows you the percentage of renter in each of these districts as a number. And if you have, the the only challenge with the number version is if you have a hot area that's very high renter on one side of a district and very low renter on the other side, it might kind of muddy it up, but you'll at least be able to see the relationship. it might kind of muddy it up, but you'll at least be able to see the relationship.
Okay, beautiful. Thank you so much. That's it for me.
Okay, Councilmember Dan, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of questions, Paul. Thank you very much for the report. It was easy to read, but I do have a couple of questions on it because I want to make sure I've got this right. So in your report on Plan Dolphin, I want to make sure I have the percentages of racial backgrounds correct. So let's say, for instance, District C, I think it's on page 39. At the bottom, it says that the Latino population is 29.8. Is that considered, that might be obvious to some people, but I just want to make sure that's 29.8 percentage of Latinos that live in that particular district or that block?
Yeah, so that district is 29.8% Latino, including kids, non-citizens. The total population of that area is roughly 30% Latino. When you go down and you ask the question, okay, what's the voting power of this Latino community? That's where they're only at 17% of the citizen voting age population. So their effective voting power is right at around that 17%, even though their representation power is more at that 30%. So if you're the council member for this new District C, you should know that almost a third of your population is Latino for the purposes of of trying to address the needs of the community that you're representing. On Election Day, they're going to be more like, you know, under a fifth of your population.
Well, that makes sense because that answers my second question about why we use the population of 18 and under because they don't vote, they're not registered to vote. But now I understand it with that particular percentage piece. Thank you for that clarification. The second thing is, getting back to the renters and the percentage of renters. I know up in the DLI and in La Mesa Village, they are military and they don't rent. I think they're given the facilities by the military. So how do you determine between renters and military personnel?
Good one.
We would have the ability in other data sets to identify military personnel in that renter homeowner calculation. It might be using just the non-military personnel, the other residents in that neighborhood or other residents in that district to capture that. There is, the military actually does something a little different when they complete the census. They do it as a group. So it's called Group Quarters, and it's a report that is done. And the same thing's done with, like, universities, where instead of going to every dorm in a university or every residence that's actually in a military base, they'll have those, they'll have a group quarters report filled out by the institution to ensure that they're getting total population counts. So there is a little bit difference in how they count that, but I would presume that when we're giving you those numbers, that's the renter homeowner population for that area that's not in the group quarters.
So if there's 3,000 students or military personnel in the DLI, and it shows 100% renters, it's not really 100% because 3,000 of them, maybe 25 or 2,600 of them are not renters, but they're just there for military purpose.
We'd have to look a lot closer, like, the actual census blocks one at a time to try, census block groups one at a time to try to identify what's going on there. But when you see 100% number in the census data, it usually means that you're looking at a very small number. So, you know, there could be, we see census block groups around the state that'll say it's 100% Latino, but you zoom in there and there's like four people. So, you know, that percentage always has to be taken with a grain of salt.
Thank you. And then my last question is, how do other cities implement the district sequencing? Is it a set formula of how everybody does it exactly the same?
So, the California Voting Rights Act has been around for about 20 years. There's been a real acceleration of the number of how it's being used recently. And this language that was shown to you earlier is newer language in the act. Agencies have utilized that to justify how they're sequencing the elections. It hasn't always been what I've been suggesting, which is taking the Latino population and put it into the presidential election cycle because, as you remember from looking at that, it didn't just say explicitly, put the minority group in the higher turnout district. It said, consider the interests of that community to determine when to place them into an election cycle. So as an example, in Santa Ana, when we did their redistricting, the Asian population that was having their, that was suing based on the CVRA claim in Santa Ana, instead of aligning their election, their district that was being drawn with the highest Asian population, instead of aligning that to the election date where they actually would have higher turnout, they wanted to align it to the election date that was coming up next. Their decision was, we've gone for the entire history of the city, never having an Asian elected official. We're more interested in getting an Asian elected official in the next 16 or 18 months. So they did that, and were successful in electing the first Asian city council member in the city of San Jose, or not San Jose, Santa Ana. So it's not a formulaic, or it's not prescribed that you do it a certain way, but it is one of the things that should, as the language says, has special consideration. Now, we've also seen, just for the record, San Mateo just completed their process. They assigned their last district's election date by flipping a coin. And we've had others that assign their election districts by pulling numbers out of a hat. So it doesn't have to be some kind of strict formula. And you do have a lot of ability to come up with just what makes more sense. You know, if you have a council member whose term is expiring in 2022, and they're in one district, and the next district has somebody whose term is expiring in 2024, you can use a little common sense to say, well, let's just keep those to be aligned to those election dates. It wouldn't be appropriate, under the rank criteria, for us to utilize that information in the drawing of districts. But when you're doing the alignment of those elections dates to, you know, have a rational basis, utilizing kind of all the information you have is fine.
Thank you. Just one last question, Mayor. Thank you. I've noticed, looking at all the maps, and I know, Nat, you did a good explanation of why Monterey Vista is split up, and it's really the only neighborhood in the whole process that's split into two different districts. In fact, in each one of the, all four of them. And I'm just wondering, is that because it's just the largest population in the city of Monterey? Or is it just too difficult to divvy up into other neighborhoods or not? I'm just curious about that.
So, we have to, the other thing, when you said, when you started going down this direction, I was thinking you were going to talk also about that keeping Old Town and Downtown together perfectly is hard in these plans as well, right? The, there's, just because of the way the city's shaped, if you were to take all of Monterey Vista and put it only in one district, you kind of landlocked some of these other areas. So then you're putting Skyline in the same district as the New Monterey neighborhood, which might not make sense. So you say, okay, well, Skyline and Monterey Vista, we want to have those populations be together. But then you run into total population numbers as well. So there's a number of factors that make it hard to just kind of like one area, and this is true everywhere we redistrict. One area that's kind of in the middle, to be able to try to draw it as its own unique district can be challenging.
Yeah, I forgot. I'm sorry. I did see Old Town and a New Monterey was split too.
It does vary. I mean, and I'll add briefly here that, that's just in some plans. You've got the Old Town, the lower part has to be split because of population. Part of that has to do with, in this Abalone plan with neighborhoods. Largely, the upper Presidio with the 3,000 students is why this part is split. But then you keep going to, let's go to the Batraye Plan, for example, briefly. And you'll see the New Monterey is split in this case.
Yeah, that was my oversight, Nat. I just didn't see it. Sorry.
Yeah.
All right, thanks. Alan, any questions today? Councilmember Alan?
No questions. I'm ready to hear from the public.
Okay, excellent. I have one question, which maybe, Paul, you wouldn't answer. In fact, it may be a question for our commendable city attorney, Chrissy, and that is, some folks have been concerned about the NCIP, the Neighborhood Community Improvement Program, which has 16 identified neighborhoods as required by the charter. And those 16 neighborhoods have been designated and recognized by the city council, and a map is included in the NCIP manual outlining where those neighborhoods are. So when we go to district elections, does this in any way interface with the NCIP neighborhoods that we recognize? Or are they separate? Does that make sense?
It does make sense, and the NCIP will remain intact as it's currently constituted unless there is a change to the charter to have a different process.
Okay, so again, the NCIP makeup will stay the same?
Right.
As it is now. Okay, now, we'll want to reiterate that because that was probably one of the major concerns, I think. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
So at this point, then, Councilmember Ed, I see that your hand's up again. Go ahead. Another question. Unmute, please, Ed?
Apologies for that. I have a map open that you were referencing in part of the presentation, and just a question in terms of the boundaries from county to the city. So I'm looking at District B for Cuddlefish. And I know that this adjustments are made later, once you pin it and you read one. But this particular district shows a lot of the county in it. As an example, Scenic Drive is Pebble Beach, the country club. You know, parts of the Pacific Grove Carmel Highway are ours. But that's an interesting district, but much of what's shown in that green is, may or may not be in the city of Monterey. And then there's also one little sliver that is, kind of looks like it's in Pebble Beach, but actually it's Shepherd's Knoll condominiums that is in the city of Pacific Grove. So just a process question of, how do we make sure before these maps that we see are finalized that we've actually not gotten some from Monterey County, but it truly is just in the city of Monterey, and those numbers are accurate?
Yeah, so it's actually a great question. And it should be really cut and dried, like, we should be able to push a button and know exactly the boundaries of the city of Monterey. When we do this, we base our analysis using the city of Monterey is defined by the US Census Bureau. Well, that sounds pretty official, and they should have a really perfect census boundary. But two examples that stand out, both City and Napa and City and Davis had inconsistencies between their known census, their known boundaries and the boundaries identified by the US Census Bureau. They were generally pretty small and had small impacts on their redistricting, or even potentially no real impacts on the redistricting. But we have actually already emailed to the County of Monterey Registrar Voters to get from them your boundaries so that we have a second source of those boundaries. And if you have a GIS department, we want to have a little Zoom call with to go over the boundaries. We can do that. The areas of concern, if it is Pebble Beach or a golf course, that's probably not going to be a big population issue and something that we can resolve. But we have already started to take steps just to kind of, in the background, make sure that we can verify the census boundaries with some other agency.
Okay, great. And I know this is preliminary, and you'll have a chance to finalize this, but that particular map distinctly shows areas that I know where the county and also may have excluded a large condominium that is in the city of Monterey. So just something else to work on through GIS.
Great to know. I appreciate that.
You bet. Thanks.
All right. Thank you for the excellent questions and presentation. Once again, let's open up to the public. Do we have anyone in the council chambers who would like to share some of their thoughts on this? Again, taking a look at the four suggested maps. And secondly, any ideas about sequencing which districts should be up in 2022?
Mayor Chief Hobler in the council chambers, yes, we have two people here who I think both want to make comments. If you'd like to start here.
Good, thank you, Chief.
Hi, everyone. It's great to see you all and be back here.
The green?
It was green. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
It's great to see you all and sort of be back together. I just want to make some comments about districts. And I have to say that the Cuddlefish Plan is the one I'm rooting for. I think that keeps our neighborhoods together the best. And in Plan Batraye, that district seems almost unwalkable for the, what would be like Fish Flats, Skyline, all of that, and it's just too spread out. So this has all been a really great learning experience for me, and I am grateful that we have the opportunity to do this and maybe shake up our council a little bit. And I also have a public comment about something not on the agenda, so are we going to go to that afterwards?
That will be at the end of the meeting, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Did you want to identify yourself for the record? You don't have to, but...
My name is Zoe Carter, and I'm a resident of Montsalis. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Robert Joey. Can you hear me through the mask?
Yes, we can.
All right. My comments tonight are more for the use of the demographer. The council members, I apologize if I'm reading a dead warhorse on some of the issues that I bring up. But one of the things that caught my attention when I filled out the online form was the community of interest. Part of the definition of that is issues that could come before the city council. Do you share a common interest? And that's how I defined a neighborhood that I submitted for a community of interest, the North Fremont-Del Monte area. And as you know, if you've lived in Monterey, the neighborhoods make up Monterey. We are Monterey. And I live in the Casanova-Oaknoll area, and two of the maps actually split us up or merged us and make us dysfunctional. The four maps are a Hobson's choice. If I had to select one, it would be Plan Dolphin. There are no fatal flaws against the neighborhoods. No neighborhood is split off and combined with different issues facing them. Criteria two in your community of interest is the geographic integrity of any local community or the local community of interest shall be respected. Kona is in the North Fremont Street and the Del Monte Boulevard area. We are a cohesive social and demographic cluster of neighborhoods. We even have a business district. We also have a neighborhood-specific plan. Kona has the last remaining working-class housing, and we have the majority of the city's affordable apartments and rental housing. We have a barely surviving commercial district, need of modernization. Plan A or Abalone splits off Kona away from our neighbors and merges us with the wealthy homes above our forested hillsides and canyons. They have no apartments or a commercial district. We do not share similar neighborhood issues before the city council. We are subjected to traffic, parking congestion, and noise from the fairgrounds. Our motels and restaurants are impacted by fairgrounding plants. Plan Cuddlefish is similar in that it merges Kona's neighborhoods with the... 55 seconds? What I would ask you is that Kona is the sole entrance to the airport. If we are split off and combined with the wealthier neighborhoods, our voices will be outnumbered by 4,000 votes. Please do not split our neighborhood down the center of Fremont Street. If you do, you will destroy 10 years of effort of both our neighborhoods on the Del Monte and Fremont Street side to improve our neighborhood. We are a community of interest. I would support Plan D, but also it needs to have the support of the other neighborhoods. We all are in this together, and thank you for your efforts. This is probably the most difficult subject that has come before the city council in my memory. I applaud you for your efforts. Oh, if I could ask one more thing, could the demographer add some translucency to the shades over the streets in our neighborhoods so we could see what the streets are a little bit better? You can do it with your GIS. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Robert.
And Mayor, from the council chambers, I don't see anybody else here that wants to speak at this time.
Okay, thank you, Chief Dave. We appreciate you being there. All right, Clementine, who do we have online who'd like to share their thoughts with us?
Hi, we do have some folks with their hands raised, and Jean Rash has been patient. She's had her hand up for a while. Please go ahead.
I'd just like to be at the front of the line, that's all. I mean, it's Jean Rash from Monterey Vista Neighborhood Association. Such a good presentation, Paul, and lots of great questions. I think Paul said that we can redo the census tracts every census. Not that we would want to redo the districts, but how often could the districts be redrawn? And would they have to be redrawn every census? And it seems that we're forced to make equal four districts from census tracts that are so... four districts from census tracts that are so unequal that we have quite the dilemma. Again, we have the 3,400 up in Upper Presidio, and then we have a tract that's only 200 people. And that leaves us with a lack of flexibility. And it did catch my ear that maybe we could get rid of that problem in 10 years by redrawing the census tracts. And nobody has addressed that, so I'd like to think about that long term. The Monterey Vista Neighborhood Board met last night. We were attracted to Cuddlefish. It does keep the neighborhoods demographically intact and sane moving with like communities with contiguous borders. But my board was very clear to express to you their irritation with the whole, the whole process that LULAC, without any documentation of racial bias, can command our city to do this. I understand all the legalities, but they want to express that to you. And that the... I hope that, like Tyler said, that we could get the renter overlay on the demographics. I was kind of surprised that that wasn't included for tonight. I thought there were at least 40% of the comments said that that was really important, the written comments and the verbal ones. So I was really hoping for that tonight. We got it on the one map, but that came tonight rather than from the 28th, 29th. And let's see, what else did I want to say? Great on the maps that we can enlarge them. And I think that's it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Jean.
All right, let's see who we've got next. Up next, we have Esther Malkin. Esther, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Esther.
Sorry about that. Esther Malkin, Vice President of the Neighborhood Association of Laguna Grande Neighborhood. And I am the representative of Monterey County Renters United. I want to just point out that this is actually a very interesting process when it comes to the numbers because we have known all along that the renters are a significant population and a majority in the city. And this is kind of proving it. When it comes to the minorities, it's, the minorities are arguably mostly going to be renters because the socioeconomic values that we usually find, the minorities are the ones that tend to not be able to afford homeownership, especially now. I will say that because of that, I think it's important that we are given this special consideration when it comes to the sequencing because it is, the renters need to have their voices heard, and they've never had their voices heard before. So given that, I strongly urge everybody to prioritize the districts that have the majority of renters in them as the ones that go up for the first election in districts. Aside from the numbers and all the data that may be there about how often Latinos come out and vote and what cycles they vote in, in our city, we, as Jean mentioned, had no real reason for LULAC to come after us in the first place and force us into this process. But if we are going through it, the data is showing that we need to... The main community of interest here, when you're talking about the majority of the residents in the city, are renters. Therefore, they should be prioritized. As far as the actual district lines, I'm on, like I said, I live in Laguna Grande Neighborhood, and I see absolutely no reason why this side of the city, as at least my side of Fremont, should be included with Montsalis and Deer Flats or Fish Flats at all because they don't have any rentals, to my knowledge whatsoever. Kona has some, but I would argue with the gentleman that said they have the majority of them because my understanding is that New Monterey and Villa Del Monte have the most density. And therefore, the density equals the most number of renters. So again, the renters have to be the main consideration here, and we should be sequenced to go first and have our voices heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther.
I'm sorry, I thought I was, I forgot to unmute. Rick Quayre, please go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Rick Quayre. I'm resident of Monterey. I'm gonna throw something different out here. I'm having a major issue with this idea of renters as a monolithic group that are a community of interest. You have renters who are sharing a studio apartment. You have renters who are renting a four-bedroom house. They are very different individuals. They have very different interests. I think you need to be a bit more specific with what you're calling as renters. There are areas of town which have a higher ratio of apartments and are almost exclusively apartments. Yes, they may have a community of interest together, but they're not going to be the same community interest as Monterey Vista, or Alta Mesa, or others, all of which have renters. You saw the map earlier. Every neighborhood in this town has renters. Also, that map was a bit misleading. It had my neighborhood showing 71% renters because it included Glenwood Circle, two vastly different types of neighborhoods that are next to each other. But I know on my street, it's 15% to 20% renters. So let's stop being this generic term, be a bit more specific, whether it's low-income renters, apartment renters, or whatever. But there's renters and taking the numbers as a city as a whole is a misnomer and does not meet the community of interest standards. To me, I think either Cuddlefish or Dolphin, or I also submitted one that's similar to Cuddlefish, and I know someone who submitted one close to Dolphin, had the least impact on neighborhoods in the city. They also, in case of both of those, concentrate folks who are in the apartment areas as well as Latino area. There's one section of seven or more of our neighborhoods in this town in the history of the city of Monterey has never had a member on the city council. They also tend to be clustered in the area that's concentrated in Dolphin, where the Latinos are and the others. While it may be LULAC that brought it up and forcing at this point, a group of us raised this issue a year ago as it relates to the lack of representation across the entire city. I think you should either go with Cuddlefish or Dolphin, and I do tend to agree. Dolphin tends to keep folks who are closer socioeconomically together by including Oak Grove in with Laguna Grande, Del Monte Grove, and the other area. Either of those, to me, works. A and B are non-starters. They do too much breaking up of neighborhoods for no reason. And unfortunately, it's the reason of 3,000 people in one census tract in the DLI that's causing the need to having to split up Old Town and Monterey Vista. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Right. Thanks, Rick. Next, we are going to hear from Bruce Zeneta. Bruce, please go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, I had unmuted here. Yes, I'm Bruce Zeneta, and I'm a mayor and city council. I don't know upstairs to get this, so let me catch my breath. I, man, this is just so crazy. The first thing is, yeah, New York is going through this. I just came from a vacation in New York. We're not New York. We're a small community. And I emphasize community because that's where a lot of our value is. New York is a lot of boroughs and everything, and it just, I don't even want to try to compare that. Secondly, I feel like there's a whole lot of numbers at work here, and a lot of history and culture is being looked at. Architects, when they have a client to do a house, they, if they come at that project with just numbers and they don't consider that client's history and culture and, and needs and desires and all of that, then they're out of the job after a while. So, so the interesting thing about that is that the California Elections Code actually kind of addresses those cultural issues, those geographical cultural issues. And they give you the guidelines. They give you the code to follow. And yet, when I look at some of the ways these neighborhoods are split up, these neighborhoods with all this history and culture built into them for many years, and you mentioned NICP, and it's just, I could go on and on and on. You're not following the guidelines, or the guidelines are not being followed here, one through four. And let me just quickly read a part of what, for, "To the extent practical, practicable, and where it does not conflict with the preceding criterion, this subdivision." Now, and you guys should, you know, you know the preceding. That's the key thing. It is conflicting when you go and split these things up based on just numbers. The, so when I look at Monterey Vista, just because I know it well, but we could cite other neighborhoods, there's a line drawn down through that. And you have a serious problem with the ones you split off of this community of interest thing. It's just so many problems being missed when you just do it by the numbers. Now, quickly, as a possible solution, maybe a question here, because I'm running out of time. It looks like the problem with the neighborhoods that got split down the middle is the DLI. Maybe there's something creative that could be figured out there, like the DLI has a, since they don't vote anyway.
Hey, Bruce, I'm sorry. I need to cut you off. We need to be fair to everybody in the public hearing. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, and we do have to follow the Brown Act. And thank you, Clementine, for helping us do that. And I want to encourage my friend Bruce, send your comments in to us, Bruce, suggest@monterey.org, email us and so on. I wanted to hear what you have to say. Thank you for your input. So folks, if three minutes isn't enough, I want to assure you that your caring city council and astute city staff reads them all and takes them under consideration. So you can always get to us again in writing or at our next meeting when we will be doing this again. So carry on.
All right, it looks like our next speaker is named Anne. Anne, please go ahead. You'll need to, there you go.
There you go. Thank you so much. Good evening, members of council and staff. I wanted to thank you so much for your diligence. I am a homeowner in the Casanova Oak Knolls neighborhood, and I'd like to strongly urge you to consider the Dolphin Plan. We are looking forward to having a representative on council that represents our very unique community. And I just wanted to thank you very much for your consideration of that. Thank you for your hard work on this project. I know it's taking a lot, and I appreciate the opportunity to have this public comment and to be able to voice my support of the Dolphin program or the Dolphin Plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Anne.
Thank you. And let's see, next, let's have Richard Rucello.
Good evening, Mayor Clyton, members of the city council. Richard Rucello at Casanova Oak Knoll. I'd like to clear up a statistic. Casanova Oak Knoll has 304 single-family homes and about 350 apartments. The four neighbors around my home are all renters and very, very good renters and good people. What I want to point out is the Plan Dolphin in District C, which takes Casanova, Oak Knoll, to Del Monte Beach and Oak Grove. The similarities of interests are the things we've been fighting for. Impacts from commercial areas, we all have that. Fairgrounds impacts, traffic and parking problems, airport impacts. We all have apartments with single-family homes. It's relatively level. It's contiguous. It's compact. We can get to each other easily. Our main traffic arteries are Fremont, Del Monte, and Highway 1. But when you look at Cuddlefish, where we're tied up with the forested areas, they have none of these issues. They're all more affluent areas. Cuddlefish includes us with Aguado Oaks, which is very difficult to get to. We have the highest minority numbers in the city in Dolphin, District C. We, we have to point out these differences where we're split up with other non-similar areas. The geographical break is the Selenius Highway. That is a hard line. We all have these other issues that we've been working together with to solve. So I urge you to adopt Dolphin. And let's try to... Every one of those neighborhoods has never had a city council member in the history of the city of Monterey. So I urge you to try to fine-tune this and look at the larger picture. The renters are all throughout every one of our neighborhoods. There is no, well, unless you look at Cuddlefish, you'll see a higher ownership there than renters. You don't see that in Dolphin. So I urge you to relook at this, and hopefully we can resolve this. I too don't like this process. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have someone who has called in by telephone. This is the person with the last four, last three digits, 204. Please unmute yourself. You could dial star six to unmute. And please go ahead.
Good evening. Tom Rowley from Fisherman Flats Neighborhood. Just wanted to, we submitted an email saying that our neighborhood, the executive committee met last night, looked at the various four maps, especially that were prepared by the consultants, and thought that Cuddlefish was the preferred map for contiguous, compact, equal in population, and does less to divide up the neighborhoods between the major north-south routes like Mungerus Avenue, Aguado Road. The main artery of Highway 68 does divide. However, the access, the main avenues route people in toward the ocean and does less to break up the existing neighborhoods when you look at the existing communities of interest from the existing neighborhoods. Throwing East Monterey in with neighborhoods around the school really creates a mixture of interests that are not compact and not contiguous. The north and east of Monterey makes more sense to keep those neighborhoods together. So that's why, basically, we came up contiguous and compact, that the Cuddlefish is so superior as far as breaking up the east and north, the central, the Monterey Vista, and the new Monterey neighborhoods. So thank you very much. Our executive committee hopes that you will come to a fine decision. And sorry you aren't able to make the decision tonight, but we'll look forward to hearing what city council decides at its next meeting in two weeks. So thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to input on this important, important decision for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have John Sovereign with a hand raised. John, please go ahead. Please unmute and go ahead.
I just want to briefly say, encourage the council to reject district-based elections. I understand why we're here. The safe harbor provisions of the CVRA are pushing us towards district-based elections. towards district-based elections. That is not the only solution to improving representation on the city council. There are other voting schemes that could be explored. This is not the only option. Thank you.
Thank you. And, um,
Thank you, John.
We have no further hands raised at this time.
All right. Well, good. We do definitely appreciate all the great input. All right. Back to the council. Again, no decisions. Uh, any, any thoughts? I think it's fair, but we obviously have to have another public hearing and keep our minds open to more public comments. So any final thoughts from the council on this subject? Okay, then, uh, council member Alan.
Um, yeah, so obviously I still have my mind open as to the various proposed districts, but I will say the one map, um, the Bat Ray, I think the public comment that you heard about that, I find very compelling. I don't think that. It seems like it creates at least one district that is completely non-compact, non-cohesive, intermixes, all kinds of different communities of interest. So in my view, that one, I, I, it would be hard for me to imagine supporting the Bat Ray. And then I would also just note, it's interesting in the public comment, we're now quite a ways into this process. You're not hearing our community residents largely excited about this. Um, you hear some people quite adamantly oppose. Other people are resigned. They're trying to find the best district possible. But I think that really reflects the fact this is not something that our residents wanted. This is something that was brought by outside interests with their own political agenda. And, uh, for those of you who, who feel that way, please understand we are operating in an environment where there is a legal hammer imposed over the city that could have quite detrimental financial impacts to us. And that is, at least for me, and I think probably for others, one of the driving reasons why this is moving forward despite the fact that it could have detrimental impacts for representation for folks, um, who instead of having five council members will have one council member and a mayor that will be directly responding to them.
All right. Thanks. Thank you, council member Alan. I'll close it with, uh, starting off where Paul was talking about comparing he and Hans who maybe lived in different districts. One had 500,000 and another 500. I thought you were describing the United States Senate there for a minute.
Yeah, it is not, those are not equal sized by any means. Uh, we can debate that too.
Yes, and well, that, that's another discussion, but you, you take a look at the senator from West Virginia with a 1.7 million population. Then the population of, uh, Montana is about 800,000. And so probably time to do a California Voting Rights Act on the US Senate, right?
You can make a motion. I don't know.
Yeah, there you go. But as, as we discuss this, um, as you all know, I've, I've been on the council a while. And it's been my experience that wherever someone lived, that the city came first. And I, I know all of the council members currently think of that too. So I'm thinking that as we go districts, I have full confidence that obviously someone from a district is going to be thinking about their district as they well should. But people are going to vote for what's best for the entire city. I totally have confidence in that and we have a model for that. The Neighborhood, uh, and Community Improvement Program. 16 individuals come together. And I've attended hundreds of their meetings, having started that program in 1985. And without fail, people are voting for other neighborhoods. They're not pursuing their own self-interest because Monterey comes first. We all love it. We take care of it together. So whether we need district elections or not, I think that ship has sailed. Elvis has, uh, left the building. Uh, the horse has left the barn. There's one more. I don't remember it right now. But I have full confidence that we're going to be well represented, district or city at large. So with that, shall we go on to our next topic? Shall we plow through? Do you want to take a break, uh, council? We're probably pretty close to the end. So shall we plow through?
Just keep going.
Yeah, I see. I see. Yes, lots of yeses. Okay. Once again, thanks for Paul and our incredible staff who have been spending a lot of time to bring this polished product to us. So, uh, thank you so much. Continued public comments. This would be anyone who didn't speak this afternoon, who would like to share with us on a topic within the jurisdiction of the city of Monterey, but not on the agenda. Now, I don't know if Zoe's still in, in the council chambers or she's.
Yes, Mayor Chief Holber, and it looks like we have a member of the public who would like to speak.
Okay, very good. Let's start in the chambers then, please.
Hi again. My name is Zoe Carter. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can, Zoe.
Okay, great. I just, um, wanted to touch on the topic of the resident parking permits going on. And I wanted to encourage the council to try to keep that alive. I think it's a really important thing that we do for our city and our 939 residents. I know that it was said that it's part of the budget and being fiscally responsible, but I think that, you know, just being able to park for two hours in the city lots, especially the waterfront lot is really an important benefit that we get as residents. And I am one of the yearly pass holders and I use it all the time, but I think we need to also extend the courtesy to our neighbors who live in neighboring communities as well. So I hope that this topic is considered again and, um, we think thoughtfully about our residents and what this means to them and how they can support our local businesses, because I think that's also important. And we can have a thoughtful conversation about what this would look like, maybe not canceling it or keeping it for a short amount of time and what that would look like going forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Zoe.
And Mayor, I don't see anybody else in the chambers that wishes to speak at this time.
Okay, thank you, Chief Dave. And anyone online, uh, Clementine?
Yes, I see Luis Osorio has his hand raised.
All right. Welcome, Luis.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I actually had my hand raised to speak on the last item. I think Clementine missed it or some glitch happened. So I just wanted to make a comment on the, on the maps.
Yes, please, please do, Luis. Yes, please do. We're sorry.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Clay. I appreciate it. Um, so I, I think it's interesting that, um, you know, everybody that commented is, is, you know, everybody that has been involved in politics in this town forever and ever. And, uh, there, there are some claims that, uh, some areas have not had representation on the city council, and I don't recall anybody from those areas have ever run for office. Um, so I just wanted to sort of mention that. Um, as far as the, the, this business of the community of interest, I think everybody obviously has a different idea of what that means, depending on what their interests are. And, uh, I, I think it's, 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 it's really interesting, you know, because, uh, I, um, I mean, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's sort of the core issue that, that the city council has taken into account. As far as, as far as the maps, I, I think, you know, again, it's, it's, it's hard at this point with, with a lot of reviewing and a lot of studying. And I'm sure a lot of you are having the same issues I am having. It's, it's really hard to, to evaluate the, the pros and cons of every single, you know, um, every single, um, district map in, in the four different maps that have, uh, has been presented. I'm, you know, uh, the, the other issue is this business of the renters and the not renters. Um, I think historically the renters are a, you know, a misrepresented group that has been more misrepresented than other groups. And, you know, I, I speak for myself, obviously, because everybody knows I'm a renter, you know, for 30 years and it's my choice. I could have moved. I didn't move and I stayed here and I, I rent, you know, but, um, it's, this, this, this issue is, is to me is the core issue because a lot of the actions and a lot of the needs for the city are those of the renters. You know, I mean, yes, there's a lot of other issues, but the renters have not had proper representation in the city council. You know, for, in, in the history of the city, the way I see things. I appreciate the time and hopefully we can have more, uh, discussion at the next meeting.
Thank you, Luis.
Thank you. And we do have another hand raised, Mayor.
Okay, Clementine, before you have, uh, have that hand raised, let's take the opportunity, if someone in such as Mr. Osorio's case somehow couldn't comment on the last item and like, would like to do that now, we would open that to anyone else who wants to talk about the maps.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, so this is a telephone caller with the last three digits, 185. So please unmute yourself by dialing star six. Caller 185, if you'd like to speak, please unmute yourself. And we're going once. Well, Mr. Mayor, if there were any other hands raised, I would call in someone else. In the meantime, there are no other hands and this.
All right. Well, let's see if that, yeah, well, why don't we just go ahead and if that person is able to, uh, join us, then we can reopen public comments.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, announcements from closed session. Do we have any announcements from closed session from our?
Um, there was, um, the unanimous roll call vote with council member Williamson absent, um, with confidential direction given to labor negotiators.
Okay, good. Thanks so much. And let's go ahead to, uh, council comments.
No, no comments, Mayor.
Okay. Council member Alan, anything this evening?
Okay, let's.
Council member Tyler.
Nothing on my end, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, council member Ed.
Yeah, just real quick, um, happy new year to everyone and, uh, I hope everyone enjoyed, uh, the December 31st events. Um, so just a fantastic event from the city of Monterey and those came and gathered, um, for a close night. Also, I wanted to call out, uh, the Transportation Authority Monterey County. Um, this, uh, month, at the end of the month, I'll end my year for being the chair and had the privilege of writing a commentary that was sent to the media and published today. And of course they get edited and the one thing I wanted to reinforce, uh, it was still, still a good article. But I wanted to reinforce that my thanks to, uh, the staff of Transportation Authority Monterey County and all the fine work that they do and also the community members that participate and, uh, come to the meetings and this last year with, uh, COVID, of course, it's been electronic, but we have had a steady participation of, uh, members of the community across the county of Monterey to help us navigate our transportation challenges. But kudos to the staff and our new executive director, Todd Muck. And, uh, we, I'll be passing this on to supervisor Mary Adams at the end of the month who will be our incoming chair. But just wanted to say thank you to the community and the staff, uh, for the work that we've been able to do this last year at Tampa. And that's it.
Okay. Well, thank you, Ed, for your chairmanship and also to all the council members who serve on outside boards, commissions that make some really very serious decisions and important decisions representing our city. So, and I did see your commentary. It was in the Herald.
Yeah.
Yeah, I still get a newspaper.
With paper where you hold it, right?
Yes, I do.
They're published, Ed.
Yes, yes. Yeah.
It's, it's already gone. It's, it's disappeared.
Right.
Two days, two days old news.
Well, uh, we can find it online too. I, I did have the chance to go to first night and I was asked to welcome everyone to the state theater where the Monterey County Pops perform. And the Monterey County Pops Board, um, paid for the musicians to be there. It was their donation. And also the, uh, and Ken White, a longtime colleague of, uh, the Alberts and Monterey High School coach, athletic director, former mayor of Carmel, um, was there and gave a greeting as well. And he's very active in the Salvation Army as well as Monterey County Pops. And then, uh, Bill Wakowski, a volunteer commissioner, longtime planning commissioner for the city of, uh, Monterey, represented to the old Monterey Foundation, which paid for the state theater and the venue. So it was a free concert to everyone. It was required to show proof of vaccination. Masks were worn by everyone, including the musicians. And the, uh, the concert was absolutely incredible. Standing ovation, so professional. And then we did briefly walk around downtown, a smaller crowd, uh, less activity, of course, fewer venues with, uh, obviously because of the pandemic, but it was better than last year when there was no first night. And going forward, we have our fingers crossed that with the Omicron variant, with schools starting up again, I'm seeing more and more venues and activities right now being cut. Uh, not only, uh, na- nationally, but even locally, we're seeing people are going to be very cautious and hope this surge runs its course and we can get back to the new normal. So first night was a tremendous success and, uh, city of Monterey is a proud co-sponsor of that. City manager report, Hans, you get last word this evening.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Mayor. First night Monterey, um, uh, deserves all the credit. Uh, I want to mention that our fire department, uh, was on Albrother Street, uh, administering vaccinations from four to seven PM and we broke records, uh, at night. Uh, over 180 vaccinations were administered. Many of them were first timers who stood in line. And that leads me to the second topic. Uh, they stood there in line because the message is getting across that Omicron is picking on you and sends you to the hospital for those who are not vaccinated. Uh, Omicron is, is a real fact in, in the city of Monterey, in the county of Monterey, the numbers from today were very scary. Uh, 200, I think in excess of 240 vex, uh, infections, uh, in one single day. Uh, the numbers in the city of Monterey have also increased. Um, the hospitalization rate is again in the 40s, uh, in all three hospitals, uh, or four hospitals in the county of Monterey. Um, Omicron is, is a fact also in our city employees' lives and our cities' lives. So, um, while we, um, um, look forward to, 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 to the next few months, uh, we, we are, um, uh, tightening again, uh, our, um, our deals, uh, our ways, how we deal with the public and also how we interact. And I encourage the whole community to, to switch to K95 masks. The cloth masks don't work. Uh, they look cute on you, but, but they really do not prevent Omicron, which is a really, really infectious variant right now. Uh, so, um, with that introduction from first night and vaccinations to Omicron, that concludes my remarks for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Well, then we will adjourn with once again appreciation to the public, our outstanding staff and our council for another really interesting, thoughtful meeting. I always leave these meetings just grateful and with lots of, uh, things to think about. So thank you all. Have a good evening. We are adjourned.